Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Caprio. Councilor Dooney.
Here.
Councilor Esposito. Councilor Fawnin.
Here.
Councilor Fuji. Councilor Wentworth.
Here.
I have a motion for the movement from July 10, 2012, Regular Water Pollution Control Authority. Moved by Councilor Wentworth.
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Rose.
I just have one correction on page six, item E, the vote should read six one instead of six zero.
Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Dooney.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes. Oh, no, abstain, I'm sorry.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda Correspondence Citizens Statements.
I got a letter.
Okay.
This letter is in reference to the proposed sewer plan to be put in on Gale Drive in Northford. First of all, how does the council make the final decision to put them in when you have three houses that want them and three that don't? What is the overriding factor to put them in? Our neighbor at 25 Gale Drive paid a contractor to hook up to the sewer. It would make sense to have the three that want the sewers get together with a contractor and split the cost between themselves. This sounds like a fair deal to all involved. They get what they want and we are not stuck with a bill that we can't afford. Walter and Mary Palazuski, I might be saying that wrong, 19 Gale Drive, Northford, Connecticut. Thank you.
Thank you. Item four, unfinished business discussion in action. Item five, new business. A, schedule a special WPCA meeting and a public hearing for sewer work budget and proposed user fees fiscal year 2012-13, September 18, 2012.
This is something that you need to do on a yearly basis. Schedule the public hearing date. Kurt is currently working on putting together all the numbers, should have everything ready for you for that September 18 date. And so we are requesting that you set the special water control meeting and then the public hearing for the budget and the user fee. And Kurt is here if you have any questions.
I'll move that we hold a public hearing for the WPCA on September 18, 2012.
Second.
At 7:00 PM.
Seven thirty PM.
Seven thirty.
Yeah, moved by Councilor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Fawnin. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Dooney.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Item B, agreement for project ninety-eight.
Mayor, I think you also have to just set the special meeting date. There was two items.
A special council meeting for the sewer authority, right?
Yep.
Okay, I move that we have a special sewer authority meeting on September 18, 2012, at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Wentworth, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Dooney.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Agreement for project ninety-eight dash one oh three, engineering agreement.
Okay, briefly, this is in regard to the Route 139 Valley Road reconstruction or realignment project that the DOT has required to UOK, part of our sewer meter and part of our sewer line. That, the engine area design costs and all associated costs are 100 percent reimbursable with the state DOT. They put together basically a letter agreement for town approval, there's a bunch of attachments I did forward to the town attorney as well. It's basically their standard form of agreement. Again, the bottom line is it's something that's required to enter into the state, provides 100 percent reimbursement for all associated costs of the engineering design services, the design of the relocation of centers to align. Costs include, our consultant, our design engineer named us Young, the only water, our operator, we put some time in there, at least before next DOT, that will be covered and also my time is reimbursable, we have to track that, we put that to state and we get reimbursed for any costs of mine associated with that project. Again, it's pretty much boilerplate DOT agreement. I've reported it to town attorney, I didn't hear anything back from the council. But again, it's a standard agreement.
Has it been reviewed by the town attorney?
It's been forwarded to him, I've not heard anything back from him positively or negatively. I mean, the bottom line is, the state DOT is going to have to handle it. We get some other, we can take it for reimbursement for our cost of things that we design that the state is doing. Once this goes out to bid, once this part is finalized, then will be any construction-related inspection services in your life will have to end with a separate agreement with DOT. The construction costs of the project, they're covered that way, but it's 100 percent DOT public project.
Well, I'll move the motion, subject to the town attorney's review. This is the motion of town manager Bonnie Theryan, he authorized to enter into a letter of agreement with the Connecticut Department of Transportation for the engineering for public utility adjustment on the federal surface transportation urban program roadway or facility in Route 139. Improvements at Marbar Street and Valley Road, towns of North Ramford, the state project ninety-eight one oh one, federal aid project number O one three nine oh three three, the costs of which are 100 percent reimbursable to the town. Also that the North Ramford hereby adopts as its policy to support the nondiscrimination agreement and warranties required under the Connecticut general statutes, four A sixty A one and four A sixty A A, as amended in the State of Connecticut Public Act 07245 and sections nine A one and ten A one of the Public Act 07142 and the deputy interim town manager Bonnie Theryan, he authorizes to sign the nondiscrimination clause as required by the state of Connecticut.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Dooney.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Kurt, did they say, when they, are they still on schedule for this fall construction?
I think it's gonna, my guess, it might be delayed a little bit. I, this alone.
This, okay.
This whole project.
Because originally, weren't they talking like, they were gonna, they were talking like September originally?
And then again, the reality, it may, it may be able to get in, there's not a whole lot of engineering work, it's just gotta all get put together in the packet. But my guess is it's gonna push it off. That's my guess at this point. This, this is the element I think that's probably possible.
So, my only comment would be that any correspondence we have with them, if, you know, they, they made some agreements with some business owners down there.
Regarding closing.
When they were gonna do it, so if, if they can't do it this fall, then realistically, it would have to go to the next fall unless they're gonna break their agreement. So, so I would just reiterate to them that we're gonna, we're gonna hold them to, you know, what they told the business owners in the area for, because it would be devastating to the, to, you know, Van Wilder's mercenaries if they shut that end of Valley Road in next spring. Okay.
Item six, citizen statements and petitions. Regular town council agenda. Item seven, reports to committees, boards, and commissions. Item A, economic development commission.
I was available last night to attend. We had a representative from CERC, the Connecticut Economic Resource Center, come in, give a presentation, it was excellent, on ways that we may benefit from joining CERC, there's a certain level of membership, but the committee would like to, you know, take a harder look at that and see if it's going to really work out. And the other thing they're really talking about, but they want to at their next meeting develop a plan, is a visioning project for economic development. And what is it this community, I mean, this doesn't happen overnight, but what is it the community wishes to have for economic development, and they would include yourselves, planning and zoning, land use boards, so at their next meeting, they'll start planning for doing that in the future.
Who is it that came from CERC?
I wanna say, it is Rebecca, Rachel, she's fairly new, Graspondo or Grasponde or something, she's very, very, she's the head of the real estate division. And I know, we've also talked about, I know Joanne's working on that, Councilor Wentworth on business breakfast, so we'll be working on that too.
Thank you. Item B, permanent project building committee.
There was no meeting since our last council meeting, the next meeting is next Monday, August 13.
Item C, potato and corn festival.
Everybody had a good time?
Everybody had a good time. Item D, communications committee.
We have to set another meeting, according to the fire chief, there's some changes in the state's book into where the communications center could be located or what can be located. I think we should get the, some representatives in that can talk to us about it, so.
Maybe we could send it to, you know, have it email over to the committee and start picking a date.
But we need a date, we definitely need a date. Because if we lose, if you lose CEMAD, you're probably talking three quarters of a million dollars to upgrade the communications center eventually and, you know, it's a lot of money.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include item seven E, finance committee.
Let's take a minute.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Dooney.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
I would ask, I wasn't at it, so.
The finance committee met on July 11. The biggest items were, we discussed bids, and the Amados demo bid was being worked on by the town manager, being put together so that could go out to bid, and also that the trade bids were opened, they were being reviewed, and they are going to be awarded. And on school construction grants, we discussed the status of the overall NBIS project, and it was suggested that there be a joint meeting between the permanent project building committee and the town council, scheduled so that we can determine how we can proceed to come to a resolution as to how we can close out this project so that we can get all of our state reimbursement back on it. There's a few minor items that they're going back and forth on, the biggest things are the doors, the exterior doors and some interior doors, which they are moving forward with, and then there's some other issues, but it's been dragging on for a number of years.
We're gonna pay for the doors and then hope they reimburse us if we.
Well, there is some money that's withheld, and so it's.
Right, but what we're doing is we're paying for the doors ourselves, and then we're gonna sue the architect or whoever it is and try and get our money back.
Right, it's, there is an attorney involved with the permanent project building.
So that's how long that's gonna go on too.
Right, so, so we need to meet with them to ultimately come up with a decision that we just decide to close it out so that we can move forward, there's still money.
Get the state money.
Right.
And hopefully get paid back by the architect's attorneys or whatever.
Right, true.
And then the other thing was, on grants, and the application for the next round of Steve grants was submitted by August 1, and that was submitted for another $500,000 for the Stanley T. Williams conversion. And that's it.
Just on, on the bids for electrician, plumbing, and carpenter, I get a couple inquiries as town residents who've been doing some electrical, plumbing, and carpentry for 20 years, they were never notified that it went out to bid. And is that portal to portal that we're paying some Waterford or Plainville companies to drive down here for an hour, do some work and drive back home an hour?
It's, it's further on the agenda, that.
Yeah, but you've covered it in the finances.
Well, that was just what we talked about, so, but we're gonna get more into it down here under new business.
Item eight, town managers' report.
Speaking of Amados, because I know this is a big issue in the town, the bid did go out, is open August 27 at 11:00, and we will be expediting the process to get that awarded, so people do not have to look at that anymore, including myself back and forth. Sixty-four Crossfield Road, the closing will be next week, we're within budget for that, so that's another project that will be almost done. And also I received, and I have a news release in front of you, that North Ramford does have the West Vile virus, in the mosquitoes, it was discovered today. And if you go onto the East Shore Health District, they have a lot of information, how to protect yourself, what you need to be careful of. We are now the 32nd town that has come out with the virus, so just, people have to really take caution, as they should anyways, but especially now. And then lastly, I just wanted to say, my husband and I attended early on the potato festival, it was a warm weekend, but I'll tell you, the number of volunteers was unbelievable. I know a lot of you sitting here in the audience and on there, were there for hours and hours, but I also heard it was quite the crowd, so congratulations to all and everyone who put that together, excellent.
The bid for the Amados, is that gonna go out to both the people that, I think they bid once before, didn't they, somebody bid on that? They don't have anybody locally that can bid on it, that's what I'm asking, I guess.
You have to have, Joey, excuse me, you have to have a demolition permit in order to do that.
And nobody in town has one?
No, people.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the people in town.
They have to check the newspapers and the state website to find out all this stuff, that's what they should be doing. We can't actually notify certain contractors, because then it's not fair to other contractors.
Can we put it in the paper that we're gonna do?
We do put it in the paper, the Sound, right?
The Sound, state website, the town website, those are three sources.
You're putting it on the Sound website?
No, the Town website.
Oh, oh, I heard you said, you copied that, you said website, right after, and I thought that they had a website that you're going to ask people to.
Perhaps the media could help us tonight, because this is a big positive thing, that we're moving forward with that, and say if there is any contractors, they should notify, it's on the town website, or they could notify our office.
When do bids close?
Pardon?
When do the bids close for that?
August 27 at 11:00 AM.
Well, that's where, when the opening is.
When is that?
The date?
Same difference.
Same day, same thing.
By 11:00 AM, August 27.
Okay.
Yep.
Community events and presentations. Citizen statements, petitions, correspondence. Resignations and appointments. Unfinished business, discussion in action. Item A, charter revision, setting the ballot questions.
At your last meeting, you decided to proceed with the revisions that the charter revision commission had proposed, and you had asked that the town attorney, working with the town clerk, put together a series of possible questions you could put on the ballot, and you have in front of you three now, one that would incorporate the residency of the manager, the second one being with the budget and the numbers of electors, and lastly, kind of grouped in together, so.
That last one kinda bothers me a little bit, it seems pretty vague, and it seems like the guy going into the booth to vote on is gonna say, what are they talking about? I mean, that question just jumped right at me as like it made no sense whatsoever.
There will be an information, and I'll at least speak to this too, because I think what happens is you start getting into everything else, it's so small, the items, I should say, the changes, that you could have a ballot that's forever long.
That third question just, I mean, you're gonna confuse people with that.
But there is an information piece that goes out along with it.
Please, you wanna comment?
It would, it would seem that the certain elective offices ought to be defined. The phrase, certain elective offices of the town, I know that the practical changes we made or proposed to make to like titles of various town offices is not, is not that significant, but the elective offices that are being revised, certainly anybody who has not been following it in the newspaper or checks with town hall, or doesn't pick up an information packet going into the voting booth, I think, is really gonna be saying, what are they voting on?
Look, the new BOE takes effect right after the election and all that, just so people will know that.
It also expanded the size of the BOE.
The elective office, they're talking, they have where the education's separate, but the elective office, which you're right, they would know, register our voters, because a lot of it's in the housekeeping.
Right.
So that we comply with state statutes, but we could do an explanatory text, much like I did with the draft report, each section of the charter, C three dash one, would be spelled out somewhere.
Where's the explanatory text gonna be, Lisa?
The explanatory text will be hanging, will have poster slices in the polling places. They have to, we have to include that with every absentee ballot, we can have it hanging in town hall, we can certainly put it in the Sound, in the Kentucky.
So, if I walked into the middle school on the other side of town to vote, there's gonna be some place prominently displayed that I can go and read before I vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Because there were so many sections.
Right, I know, there's a lot of stuff that you throw in there, but just.
But it's up to you, I mean, if you wanna break out certain.
Right, for the normal, normal guy that's gonna go in there, I, I don't even know if they're gonna bother reading anything, to be honest, or they just wanna go in and vote and get out.
And they might not vote when they don't understand the question, they may not even.
Correct, correct.
Well, do you suggest that we go to four questions and break out that, that one, because the, the town part of it, I believe, is the mayor, if there's a tie vote, flipping of the coin.
Right.
And then the Board of Ed is increasing to seven.
Right.
And then take effect right after the election.
Right, so that, would you feel more comfortable having that as one question and then everything else as another?
Obviously, I don't feel that I need it, I know what changes we made, but.
Right.
I'm just thinking of the citizen who comes out to vote but doesn't necessarily follow town affairs on a regular basis.
Has to get the.
They're still entitled to, you know, exercise their right to vote intelligently, and I'm a little bit concerned, I don't know how much we're going to disseminate this informational poster. Somebody walks into the booth and has their ballot, now can they back out and go look at the poster on the wall, or, once they go in there, do they have to vote? I'm not really sure about that. And that, that does concern me. I don't know how other people feel about it.
I think it's a valid point.
Well, I think that part of it, because that's kind of, especially the Board of Ed piece, that's a major piece.
I think it's important.
So I think that that should be broken out, and we just go to four questions.
That would probably be better, because then you could shorten the question a little bit and explain it.
I don't think it's gonna be adding a lot, we're going to indicate that they're gonna take office effective first Tuesday or Thursday, or whatever it is, following the election.
Right.
And the number will be increased from six to seven.
Correct.
Minority representation.
Right.
Right.
Because if that passes, minority representation has to be addressed. If that passed.
I mean, it already has minority representation, though.
That's a different section of the charter.
Yeah, the minority representation change.
Since we're on that, how, so who would be addressing that, is that you?
Addressing.
Coming up with the question?
Well, there's a problem, well, I'll rephrase that, but there's, yeah, there's a problem with our Board of Ed. There's a problem with, at the last election, we have a six-member Board of Ed, at the last election, three people ran, half of it, ran unopposed because by charter, they couldn't. You know, in other words, there was, there was two, I think maybe if somebody had volunteered, they could have run.
Well, the Dems could have run three.
But the two of them, you know, the townspeople, it's like you're wasting your time to go to an election that three people are running unopposed, and that's not fair to the kids in town to have three Board of Ed members that got there unopposed. So, I don't know how we, how we address that with our going to seven members, and to me, I, I know that in the, in the wisdom of the charter writers, they had it separated so that you had continuity and you never had a whole brand-new board, but I got news.
That's a staggered term.
Right, so maybe, I mean, and now it's probably late, and we should have addressed it with charter revision, but, you know what, if you're doing a good job, you're gonna get elected, and if you're not, you're gonna get voted out, and, and to me, we're in, somehow we've got this cycle going on now, where three, three out of six are elected unopposed, and that's just, and so the next people that are gonna run, oh, well, because of, there's too many Republicans, or not enough, you're running unopposed too, and it's like you don't have a choice. So, so I guess, at this point, it's probably late, but it is a problem that should be addressed, because the townspeople should have a choice, and half of an elected body running unopposed isn't a choice. I don't have the answer, but I have the concern.
When do you have to have these questions back, so you can get them on the ballot?
Your next meeting.
The next month?
We're going to send it to Secretary of State's office to make it for the November election, so you can send it back to the town attorney.
Did you say can or cannot?
We can.
We can.
You may.
Yeah, we have time.
You may.
I would prefer to get.
Then we'll work on, working with the attorney judgment, we'll get the fourth question back due to your next meeting. The rest of them are okay, I assume.
Number three, I think they're trying to separate that.
Yep.
The one and two are okay.
We just need to explain them so people can understand it right there.
Do we need a motion to set it down?
Well, we can table this.
Just table.
I mean, we're going to table the charter revision, setting the ballot questions until the September meeting, the first September meeting.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni. Councilor Wentworth, roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Dooney.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Item B, solid waste management agreement.
Hopefully, all the changes that you requested have been made, and we have all our appendices that we need, and I think we're ready to move ahead with that.
I make this the suggestion motion to authorize inter-rond town manager voluntary to enter into an attached agreement between town of North Ramford, John's Refuse, and Recycling LLC for municipal solid waste collection and disposal.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Dooney, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Dooney.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Item C, updates to the defined benefit plan documents.
We are not ready for this tonight, only because the, our representative did send back comments, but we have somebody on vacation, so next meeting, definitely. I think we'll be fine with this.
Okay, item thirteen, new business discussion in action. Item A, part-time secretary assistants in the assessor's office.
During your budget process, you had approved 6551 for part-time help in the assessor's office to assist when needed. I have talked to our assessor, and I think it's really. I have talked to our assessor, and I think it's really, really important that the assessor is out in the field as much as possible because that's what grows our grant list, you know, whether it's expecting building permits or personal property or whatever. I know that it's the policy before we even hire anyone that we bring this to you for your deliberations. One piece of information I had in there that is incorrect, I misinterpreted what was said to me, is that the money is actually in the assessor's budget, not anything to do in the town clerk, so I wanna make sure I rectify that information correctly. And I just think it's something, you've paid some outside vendors at some point to do some of this work, that's additional monies, and if we could have somebody at least for part-time, we would be able to hopefully get, as I said to Chris, I don't wanna see him in the office when she's here, so that we can get that grant list increased. One of the things that was mentioned to me, was by Mary tonight, which I guess we could look at, and I know the finance department avails themselves, is, and get, correct me the name, the Bureau, and there may be somebody who can help us with that, but I do not know the answer to that tonight. And our assessor, Christine Barres, with us this evening, if you have questions for either one of us.
Is this a temporary job, or?
Right now, it's in the budget as, you know, part-time, and you'd have to decide next year whether you'd be carrying that on or not.
But part-time at how many hours a week? The ten hours, according to?
About ten, right? Ten hours.
Did you say, just to back up a second, did we say that the money is already in the assessor's budget, or it isn't in the assessor's?
It is, I'm sorry.
Is now? No, it's my pride in here, right? Okay.
The position's already in there.
Right. Correct.
But we're talking about the sixty-five hundred and fifty-one dollars, that's it? So that's the total amount of this part-time help?
Does it make sense, or are we just gonna rebound?
I'm gonna say, I'm not quite sure what the job would be for, I mean, are we talking about going around town, seeing what we could dig up to tax more on people? I mean, going after, we're not taxing people enough now?
Oh, you mean...
Is that why we're trying to hire somebody?
What the role of the assessor would be?
Yeah.
Because this person stays in the office.
This person stays in the office so he could put the assessor in the field to see what else she could go around town and tax?
Well, Christine, maybe you could address...
I mean, I just wanna understand it right, that's all.
But you're not getting to, you come to the mic to, that you're...
Yeah, just tell us exactly what we're looking to do here.
Because the outside vendors were helping with building inspections because we were so far behind.
Right, in previous years, you hired someone to do some of the field work, because I don't have time to go out into the field. So we have several hundred building permits that I don't seem to have time to get out and do, never mind sketching them, pricing them, evaluating them. So this gives me an opportunity to get out instead of being in the office doing clerical work, making copies of field cards, or taking elderly applications, doing something that a clerical person should be doing, not taking my time doing that so that I can go out in the field and do what an assessor should be doing, which is either reviewing personal property accounts, or valuing, reviewing real estate accounts, and reviewing personal building permits. We have at least four hundred building permits out there, and I've got, I've already done over a hundred. I don't even have the time to price them, take the photos, put them in the computer, there's just not enough time with one person there and myself.
I think I'd rather have Christine out doing that than an outside vendor. She knows our town a little better than an outside vendor would. And you know, last time I got revalued, my house became waterfront property after I was there for twenty-two years. And all of a sudden, I own waterfront property, and that was a shock to me, let me tell you. My taxes went up.
Don't you have a problem with your house?
That's my piece, I'm all for it, to give you the part timer. I'll make the motion.
Moved by Counselor Caprio, seconded by Counselor Esposito. Is there any discussion?
I'm ready to vote.
Roll call.
Mayor Kandela.
No.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
No.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duddy.
No.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Fuji.
No.
Counselor Wentworth.
No.
Here we go.
As was mentioned earlier, I too was contacted by some of the local vendors, trying to say, how come I wasn't aware of it, and we've been working for the town for quite a long time. I spoke with Michelle Lock, Knackwood, I'm sorry, our purchasing agent, went through the purchasing policy that you do currently have in place, and everything was followed explicitly with a legal notice, with context, everything that we were supposed to do, we had, you know, and I think in the past, correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, they just never went out to bid on these things. So we are trying to correct those items, you know, there is a bidding policy, and we went through the proper procedures, and no one that is currently working for the town was aware of it, so therefore did not bid. And I know, I figured it would be better to put it on the agenda tonight, and let's talk about it openly so that everybody would receive information, have it correctly when they do speak to the vendors.
Well, they're aware of it now, I'm sure.
Pardon?
They're aware of it now.
Yeah.
So let me check in the paper.
I mean, everything goes on the town website that we're going out to bid for.
Correct.
And I think this all came about because the town resident did come before us, and Ken Newbig came before us and asked about, you know, why don't we use local, right, certain levels and whatever else, and that's how this whole thing started. And we looked at the bidding requirements and the cost factors and everything, and that's why this bid was put together. So it had been discussed at council meetings prior to...
We're just trying to save the back pay of money.
So that everything's in place, so that if we need to have to call someone, here's our approved list, and we can go to that, and it's there.
Right, but whatever we said has to go out to bid, has to go out to bid.
Right.
Well, my feeling is that we should at least maybe went a little further and notified some of the local vendors that have been doing it for years that this is going out to bid, instead of like a surprise, you know, that this is the first time we're doing it, we're not notifying anybody. And I mean, Cliff, who serves on the Ed Commission, spent a lot of time with one of the local electricians that have been doing the town work for numerous years, and he helped out the Agriculture Commission, trying to get some figures for the state grant that went in on some of the work that had to be done up there, and then some of the work that also had to be done, you know, through some of the local, how can I say, donations. And the guy helped the Ed Commission out a lot, was never notified that this came out for bid or anything, that it was even going out to bid, and he was working in town, you know.
But you can't notify certain contractors and not notify others.
No, but you could put it, you could put it in the paper that the towns accepted some type of bid. It was in the paper.
It was in the paper.
It was in the sound, it was on the state website. Was it in the Totoka Times or anything? We put it in the sound.
Because the sound's every week.
The sound has a better publication than the Totoka Times, the state website and the town website. And my concern in contacting some of the vendors, if I forget somebody, then I'm gonna be accused of favoritism that I forgot to send it to ABC Company, and I always send it X by Z Company, whatever.
But don't you have all the, it's my understanding that local vendors send a letter to the purchasing department to get on the bid list and let them get notified if they, it's been around for a long time, I don't know if people are just ignoring it or what, but don't you, don't you have a whole list of local vendors that you could just send out a mail to them?
We haven't had a bidder's list in quite some time, and most of it's just paper.
What happened to it?
It's paper, somebody will send in a letter and say, put me on the bidder list.
And what do you do with that?
And it stands about this tall as well.
Well, what do you do with them? Nothing?
Quite honestly, no.
Why do we even have to debate this? It seems to me, if we had three electricians that submitted bid, why don't we put them all on the list? If one guy's got a better price, that guy's gonna get the work, but let them go on the list. Why do we have to eliminate particularly local people? In a bad economy, it's bizarre to me. I think we ought to have several options on the list, if somebody's not available, or their prices are not reasonable, then we've got another option on the list. It also seems to me, you know, we were criticized by somebody, I can't remember who, who came in and said, there's no consideration given to local contractors, and I think that's a mistake on our part. You know, a lot of towns wouldn't give a local contractor the opportunity to bid on contract, and they'll give them some sort of consideration so that their bid will be viewed as somewhat ten percent less, say, than a bidder from outside of town. These people pay taxes in town, so I think they're entitled to that. If somebody's already been a contractor working for the town, I don't think they should be eliminated. They ought to remain on the list, they ought to be available, and they ought to be considered when the work is there. And this is not something where we have to kill one contractor for.
Right.
We gotta have several. And certainly, I wanna give special consideration to anybody in town.
If my memory is correct, maybe Al, you could remember.
It's an ordinance.
A few years ago, we did something about the local vendors, but they weren't getting any of the bids. And I believe that we had some kind of a thing for the purchasing agent, that if local vendors should be on a list, and they should get the notification.
You know, I remember we talked about it, I don't remember what...
I think we did it because I did it.
It's never been changed.
Right, I think it's an ordinance.
If it requires it's a tie bid, then you look at local vendor. But to have a vendor list in it, the contractor, and he doesn't submit it, then, that he wants to be on the vendor list for... But you're changing midstream, you're changing midstream. It's always been three quotes, if it was under, three written quotes if it was under seventy-five hundred dollars, if it was under twenty-five hundred dollars, you know, you get three verbal quotes. And, yeah, you did change, because now you're saying you gotta take off this list, which is wrong. It's wrong. You don't have to take off that list. If it's under seventy-five hundred dollars, all you have is, all you need is three written quotes. If it's over seventy-five hundred dollars, then it has to go out to bid. That's why it's written in the charter, unless I read it wrong. It was asked of my department to put a bid out for all of this, and other than calling everybody that I think the town has no business with, and if I forgot somebody, then I'd be accused of favoritism. Yeah, but I don't think, I don't think we should be locked to one vendor from Waterford, Connecticut. There's not one vendor, there's numerous electricians, farmers. Yeah, and the closest one is in New Haven, the rest of them are fifteen towns away. Well, Ken Newbig is on the list, he... Yeah, that's, that's, that's two, that's one carpenter. Now you've got plumbers and electricians, there's not even a close one, Trumbull. Waterford.
I think it's a false sense of fairness that we can't reach out to people that have worked for us in the past. And Michelle, maybe if somebody comes in and complains that you didn't call them, but you know what, I think that's a reasonable chance to take. If it's a local guy and he's done work for us for a number of years, I think we ought to reach out, pick up the phone, drop a postcard, something, and say, hey, John Doe, we're taking bids, if you're interested, submit one, please. I don't wanna cut local people off, not in this economy, they, they ought to be getting the first opportunity.
But when I'm asked to put out a bid, policy's been, I don't call everybody that's on the list.
I understand, maybe we have changed.
Well, then we'll make, then we'll make a change in the policy, and we'll knock this, we'll knock this list out.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, was you're gonna have to change...
If you need a motion, I'll make a motion tonight.
Policy.
Mike, did you get an answer to your question about portal, portal billing?
No.
Is that...
I said, no, it's not. It's written somewhere? It's in, I'll only read it once they come here. It's written in, it's written in the contract, or the specifications? Because according to some people, that it's not written there, and people are gonna charge portal to portal, that's, that's what they're, that's how they set up their business. They don't drive an hour for, for no fee.
Nobody's gonna do that.
You know, I'm not sure that what we've been doing for all the years was, was, was wrong. I would throw all these out and do business as usual.
I don't know if it could.
Yeah, I think you just gotta be careful of that, because I know what you're, what you're trying to say is, okay, this project is this project, and it's under seventy-five hundred. But ultimately, if you look at the budget, how much do you spend on an electrician or whomever? It's probably well over what the bids are. And there's two other, there's one other thing you're talking about, which is a local bidder's preference, and I can put something like that together. That's what we're talking about. We had that at one time. Where the, but, the percentage, and I could put that together because I've had other towns with it. But the other thing is, you're gonna have to change the present purchasing policy if you wanna head in another direction, and maybe that's what the finance subcommittee could do.
Well, we don't wanna head in another direction, but we don't wanna head in the direction that this is going in.
Yeah, but right now, I mean, the policy would...
This, this is a completely different direction. We wanna stay on the same path.
We wanna try to use local people if we can, too, I mean...
I think... So you're saying that, that we're paying like an electrician a lot more than seventy-five hundred dollars per year?
Per year.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So the problem with that is, and I'll, and I'll agree with that, is that our page staff is breaking these little projects into under seventy-five hundred dollar a year projects, and that's wrong, okay? So I will agree that there's some people, it's like, okay, I'm gonna go from here to here, and it's seventy-five hundred, and then I'm gonna go from here to here, and it's seventy-five hundred, and they're full-time employees for the town.
Should not be doing that.
And I totally agree that that's, that's wrong, but that's maybe shame on us, not shame on the vendor, you know, so I don't know how you correct that. But just, you know, now, I'm really confused, but on maintenance thing, when you have a maintenance problem, Town Hall needs a new plug for it. You get, you get quotes or verbal quotes, that's the way it is in purchasing guidelines, from three different vendors, or two for a verbal, three for, you know, it's all staged out. So, but that person, it's not always the same electrician. I guess in my case, I, there's like three of them that we go back and forth with and get work, versus a project that we need this whole area, new lights put in.
So you're telling me first...
That's over seventy-five hundred.
So for simple projects, there's never the same individual, it's always switched up?
I used three different, three different guys, you know, I have, I, you know...
We have the same purchasing guideline, I mean, seventy-five hundred.
But that's why I'm confused now, so, I mean, now we did this bid, so basically, I gotta go over that list to get quotes for the plug.
That's absurd.
You know what I'm saying?
What, what I'd like to know is, if we have hypothetically the same jobs being performed and different contractors, I would like to see the contractors and who, and their rates compared to one another, performing the same job. Because if it's being switched up, and we're paying more than less, and more than less, there's something that's not...
See, these bids are very, the bids that we're looking at are very fair hourly rates.
Right.
I certainly agree with, with that.
No, I agree, I'm just, the whole bid thing, because we went through it last year with the contractors, and all that, you know...
You mean for the snow removal?
Yeah, you know, and now, now those aren't bigger numbers than we're talking here, so it's a different subject, but on the regular maintenance stuff, I guess that's where, I guess in total, the whole year, is somebody making over seventy-five hundred dollars? I don't even know, but it could.
How do you, how do you handle the general maintenance, Michelle, as far as different...
Well, normally, we would call a contractor in if we needed a light switch repaired or whatever, a week per hour. On this particular bid, one of the questions on the bid was, would they be willing to accept the lowest bidder's price, and they all agreed to it. So I believe it was the group out of Waterford would say fifty dollars an hour for an electrician. Everybody that submitted a proposal under this bid, even if their rate was seventy-five
Everybody that submitted a proposal under this bid, even if their rate was $75 an hour, they agreed to accept the low price, so they can only build a town at the $50 an hour.
So how do you, how do you determine which one you're taking?
Which one we pick?
Yeah.
Well, we just had work done here in the Town Hall, and I picked the group out of Waterford, because they were the low bidder to begin with. But you can pick anybody off that list, and they've all agreed to accept that low hourly rate.
Did they charge travel times to come down?
No. I monitored the work that was done here in the Town Hall very well, it was over a matter of two or three days.
Right, and they stuck to whatever hours they worked, and they charged nothing for travel from Waterford? Wow.
No, I didn't. As I said, we had electrical, we had electrical work that had to get done, we had phone work that had to get done.
Could you, could you provide us with a copy of their bill for those three days?
Sure.
Great. So, I, I almost think, getting back to Joanne's point, and maybe, maybe Bonnie knows, from different towns, I almost think that, we had a discussion about it, and this is years ago, and I almost think that you're walking a fine line. But maybe it could be something, I mean, what's, what have you seen in other towns for local? I mean, you've got guys that have their shop in town, they're paying taxes in town, I mean, do you give them an opportunity to match the low bid, or can you do anything?
Well, that goes back to the local preference bid ordinance, which I can, you know.
Right, so is there such a thing as a local preference bid, and are they legal?
Yes, absolutely.
Bonnie, can you get some comparisons from towns of our size and how they bid, the variation jobs that we have, and give it to the council?
I think what it looks like.
In other words, so we could get like an outline of how comparable towns do it, with pricing, bidding, with local vendors.
Everybody's concerned about the $7,500.
You know what I mean, so at least we have a baseline to go off of.
So we need to look at that and see what we can do with it, obviously.
So at least we have a baseline then.
See, I think that, I think, you know, I can feel for you, because I think that we might have been the ones that initiated.
We were.
You know, part of this.
We were.
And we were hearing stories that, you know, again, you know, up, up at the Board of Ed, on the, on the buildings up there, there were a bunch of decks being rebuilt, the same carpenter was in there, and it was like, each one was under 7,500.
You know what happens, Al, I know what happens to.
So, you know, it's like, okay, well, this is on this building, and now we're, we're walking across and doing this building. So, you know, that's what we were, we were looking at.
Can I say something? My purchasing group, when you asked about local preferences, I did get some information from some of the surrounding towns, so I can give that to Bonnie. And also, when it came to posting bids for their particular city or town, how they handle it, so I got the feedback from many of the towns. There are a couple of towns that do send out either postcards or emails or whatever, that is not something that's ever been done here. It is certainly something we can look at. And then another thing you'd have to look at is, if you want to change the ordinance for the tie bid versus a 5% to 10% difference in the price, to stick with a local contractor. But currently, the ordinance says, unless it's a tie bid, that's the only way you can give it to a local vendor. So those are something that the town council would have to look at if you wanted to change that.
Is that the ordinance that we did for Town Hall?
The six years I've been here, it's been a tie bid, it's never been changed. So there is no local preference ordinance currently.
Can you give Bonnie a copy of that ordinance, too? I'd just like to see it, because I remember when, can't remember when we did it.
We'll put in mandatory work.
Yeah.
I, I know, my history with the town, we've never gone over $7,500 replacing plugs or lights or anything else per year. And I'm sure Fran's probably in the same ballpark, and the Town Hall was in the same ballpark, and the libraries are in the same ballpark.
I mean, I call people up in the middle of the night.
So to get a guy from Waterford down to check, change one plug in the library a day, or a change, you know, a plug at the Public Works Department, or change a light in the Police Department, is, is foolish. And not to, and to think they're coming down to change one plug for $40.
There's no way that someone's driving here for, it costs you 50 bucks to drive here from Waterford to get gas.
Right.
Plus the guy's losing other work that he'd be doing on Waterford.
Yeah, so.
They're not coming down.
So that's not happening.
And this bid doesn't pertain to the Board of Ed.
This does.
This is just town, inside of it. This is our bid, not, not.
It does pertain to the Board of Ed, too, doesn't it? I think a local car, I think a local carpenter.
Well, they have to follow the same bidding procedures.
No, no, I know, but I just, I, I thought you guys thought that when I was saying that this bid.
No, I was saying, why, I think we maybe.
Right.
Got here.
Right, right, oh, okay.
All right. So we'll.
It was just for discussion.
We're gonna review it?
Something back to you.
Okay.
And if you want, we can refer to the finance.
Right.
Is that okay?
Sounds good. All right, item C, groundskeeper, labor, highway employee, job description.
This was a position that we need to fill, it is in the budget. One of the things that Fran had wanted to do was put together a job description that fits really more so into what his needs are, including, you know, if he has to switch people's duties for a special type of job, he can do so. We have passed this job description on to the union, they have no issues with these, so we'd like for you to approve them, so that Fran can get a new position.
Is this, you facing somebody that was there?
This is just a replacement of a position that's empty.
Right.
Right, so retirement or?
So you revise the job descriptions of the three categories?
Right.
Yeah, basically, the biggest change was the license requirement.
Okay.
It's a cleanup of language, but all of them have been changed, and changed the training and experience, years. But basically, I want to require everyone to have a CDL license.
Right, so you can use them.
And the way this is written, you know, you may hire someone, but within 90 days, that's at their expense to get the license.
If they don't have it?
So we're required to have it to.
It says, or obtain within 90 days.
No, that's the old.
That's the old.
You have to look at here, these are the new ones.
Got it, got to look at the new one.
It tells us, that's all.
I'd like to move the motion. You want me to read it? Motion to approve the position description for the following public works, groundskeeper, labor and trades, and highway, and to authorize town managers to advertise this field, the vacant position in public work.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Dooley.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Farnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Item D, volleyball court. This is a project, the, I believe the Board of Education is working on.
Could you, what is the, because I'm, just wasn't at the last meeting, could you bring me up to speed on what's going on with that volleyball?
This is the first we have.
This is the first time? Because I, I mean.
Well, they, there was, the Board of Ed went before the Inland Wetlands Commission at the end of June to get a variance to put it in at the high school. And they got the variance from inland, inland wetlands, because there was really no reasons, according to the regulations, for them to deny them. So they do have the variance, and that was the first that we heard about it. But they never have come before us to get approval.
Okay.
To put this in.
Because there is, they did break ground, from what I understand, correct?
No.
Did they cut some trees?
I thought that they, there was some excavation work or something done, there wasn't?
Somebody tell me exactly where this is going to be on the school property?
Right behind that ticket booth.
Right behind the ticket booth?
You know, where the ticket.
So that's the field hockey field?
No, no, no. No, before the, before the stream, like between the high school and the stream.
Rooms where the windows are for the football on the road.
Yeah.
In the swamp?
There's, there's.
Are you serious?
It's, it's a tight spot.
Tight?
Well, the, the paved roadway has to stay there, because that's the emergency access.
Well, it all drains, right?
In the wetlands, is allowing them to put this, I don't think so.
Well, we've got to back up here a minute.
Yeah.
The town attorney ruled at a previous meeting that the only body that can build anything, upgrade anything, do anything to town property, the town council has to do it.
Well, then why?
I was to go forward with this.
They need to come.
We would need to see a site plan. We would also want to ask East Shore Health Department their thoughts on it. I, I, you know, you know, between, you know, the, the different construction rags that I've read, I, I understand that there's states that have banned them, because they're like a giant cap.
Who's going to rake them out?
You know, so we would definitely want, we definitely want East Shore Health to rule on this. And then the second thing is, what, I, I mean, we devastated them with their budget.
Supposedly.
Now they got extra money, right?
I'm going to tell you, I actually have constructed beach volleyball courts for some of my clients.
I've been watching them.
And you, the sand doesn't come cheap. Okay? So, so there is a cost to it, even if they saw a penny into putting it in for them, or anything else. But somebody's got to buy this up, then you have to maintain it. I'm not sure it was thought through. It's not a sport, a varsity sport.
No, it's not.
It's not a CIAC thing, so I'm not sure that a feel-good cat litter box is something that, that I'm going to support. But I think we can, we can send it back to them, that, you know, if you want to come, get the Health District to give us their thoughts on it, and come in with a site plan.
And a cost.
And a cost.
And a cost.
And then show us in the budget where it was hidden.
Yeah.
Because it must have been right there where we were torturing the children somewhere.
Oh, exactly.
You know? So, I don't know where the rest of you are on it, but that's where I am with it.
That's where I am, too, Al.
Well, I said we table it, and it goes on our next agenda to have the Board of Ed come before us.
What did you say, Rose, they got a variance?
They got a variance from, I was at the meeting. Bill Chody came and presented the plans to Inland Wetlands. And the three reasons he gave as to why they chose that spot was, it was level.
Mosquitoes?
No, it was an area where, when the gym teachers are out on the fields with the kids, they could supervise that. It's, I, that one, I, is a little hard to understand, because it's behind the ticket booth. And the third thing is that there was existing lights on the exterior of the building, so that the court could be lit.
Well, in my packet, I read that there's a manhole cover near the area.
Well, they, there is, and that was one of the conditions that Inland Wetlands said, is that they have to drop the manhole cover. But I think since then, they have repositioned the court a little bit, so that the manhole cover isn't an issue.
Who is doing this?
Fran and I went down.
To smash your head to die for the ball.
Well, they were going, they're going to put a net up along the stream to prevent kids from falling into the stream, and for the ball going into the stream.
That's not a stream, it's more of a swamp.
Is what Bill Chody had, you know, said.
Now, will it be a mosquito net to keep the West Nile virus mosquitoes off?
That was not clarified at the meeting.
I don't think so, they're already here.
But they, they had no cost estimates, and they.
I think somebody went off half-cocked on this.
Well, and they were, they are counting, they are counting on Public Works.
Did they have a thought process when they actually proposed this?
I don't think public works has enough to do.
Well, well, that's, the other part of the question is, is, you know, I, I don't think it's a prudent use of our Public Works Department at this point in time to do a project such as this. And, and that's, I think, one of the reasons it's on our agenda. And there's just not enough information from them in regards to this.
Is it for gym class, or?
Well, that's.
What are they doing?
That is what it was portrayed to be. That's the only thing, I mean, they only talked about gym class. So my guess is that if it is for gym class, you might get two months in the fall, maybe, September, October, and maybe two months in the spring, that they would use it.
Don't we have a big gym with a volleyball net?
They do have indoor volleyball, yes. I, I don't know what the thought process is as to why, you know, they feel they need a beach volleyball.
Did they get a building permit for this, or is one not needed?
It hasn't gone that far. I'm not even sure one would be needed.
Why don't we get individuals in here, like Al said, and then table this for now?
Table, and just.
Maybe they can answer all these.
Yeah.
But I think definitely we want feedback back from East Shore Health District.
Yep.
Because definitely, there are states that have banned them, at public schools.
You know, you don't have to table it, it's just discussion, so I'll just make sure it's on your next agenda with all the information you've requested, along with representatives from the board.
Yeah, that would probably be.
But we really need to send them a letter and tell them not to build this.
I already told them it's a hole.
They don't have permission from the authority having jurisdiction.
I don't get it.
That's how the FRC building got started.
Hey, if something works, you stick with it.
Item E, Avalon Security Cameras.
This was an item that, in the going through the minutes that I saw, was something that was tabled and just never brought back to you guys.
But it didn't go out to bid, that's fine.
Pardon?
It didn't go out to bid, that's.
I think it did.
Yes, it did. Not the first time. It just was given to somebody.
All the bids are right here.
Right, so, I mean, at this point, there is no money, and I don't really see a need yet, so.
No.
I want, so I would just say, we just reject.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to reject bid number five, 2010, 2011, security cameras start ramping the Town Hall, and ask the town manager to include this project in future long-range capital plans.
Second.
I just have one thing to say, that I think eventually, we should put a security system in here with outside cameras also. I think that would be a great idea, if we could do that, and I think it's something that we need to do for the future. Now, we can have a call. duly noted, thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Dooley.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Farnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item F, Town Manager Search.
Who are you searching for?
At this point, I think you have to decide what process you wish to move forward with, whether you're going to do this all in-house, whether you want to hire a consultant. I gave you a lot, I know I gave you a lot of information on different ways you can do this, whether you want a Citizens Committee.
We did it last time with a subcommittee, we didn't hire, we didn't hire any consultant.
So however you wish to proceed, then we can.
Yeah, I would.
I think it's to do with the full council. There is, there is a town manager's organization that we advertise.
ICMN.
ICMN.
So we want to advertise there, and that got us, I don't remember, eight or 10 responses, I think.
All over the country, actually.
That's all?
No, we got more.
Maybe more that we didn't.
Because I was on the subcommittee, we had over 20, and then we whittled them down to 10.
So the subcommittee reviews and whittles it down and brings it before the whole council? So the subcommittee reviews and whittles it down and brings it before the whole council?
Because we do have to reimburse these people for their expenses we bring them from.
Right.
Two or three came down from Maine, so there's a cost.
Right.
And if their resumes are not, we would be happy to...
So the subcommittee vets them, selects a number of candidates, and then the whole council, you're the viewer, is that pretty good?
Then we have like an interview night or two.
What?
Or three.
Fire.
Yeah, we did it two, I think. So we're going to do it. Oh, we're doing it. Alright. Very good. I don't want to be on in the front, I don't want to.
Okay, Item G, Appropriation Transfers.
Wait, wait, just a committee, just so I can...
We're doing the whole council?
Yeah.
We're doing the whole council, that's fine.
Or you want me just to place the ad and then go from there?
Whole council.
Are you happy with the ad that you used before for much?
Yeah, I read that ad, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, we could vet it out.
Did you read that?
We've got to get a town manager.
No such thing, Anthony.
We don't have a box anymore, do we?
No.
I think I would also recommend that you don't put a salary in right now, with times of change and things like that.
Salary negotiable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good idea.
Alright, and then if you can help you, at least I'll start the ad and go from there, and then...
Is it appropriate, though, Bonnie, to solicit their salary requirements?
Mm-hmm.
So if somebody's looking for $200,000?
You can ask, you can ask them to include their salary history, you could ask them what they're making now, you could ask them what they want for a salary.
We don't want to.
Yeah, I think we would want to do that, because they're showing prices themselves right out.
You got to put their preference, what they're looking for.
Now, the two, there's one that says North Bramford Town Manager, and then there's a, was that an ad, the actual ad, and then there's an ad for the Hartford Current? There were two separate ads, or what?
Yeah, the thing, I'm not sure I'd go with the current, because you're going to get bombarded.
No, I was just wondering, because the wording was a little bit different between the two ads.
Yeah.
Did we advertise anything else?
And in the Hartford Current, it has the statement, "Not a learning position," but that wasn't in the other ad?
Because they're completely different types of sites. I mean, I'm, trust me, I mean, I can also throw links to the Connecticut, the New England Managers Association.
So do we want to, do we want to put that in the actual ad?
Yes, we do want to put it in.
That's my...
It's not a learning.
The question is, do we want to advertise in the current?
No, my question is, do we want to take that verbiage for the ad that was in the current and make sure it's in the ad that we publish?
Why don't we just let Bonnie write one up? So she has an idea of the current, the current language.
You've seen them all, right? So, you know.
And then, then she could email it to us.
Yeah.
And if we have a problem with anything in it, or we have a suggestion, then, you know, we can do that. It'd be a lot better than trying to piecemeal something that's five, seven years old.
I got to tell you, that ad we didn't make out well.
Good idea.
That would be great, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so, we need a motion here?
Uh, no, I just see a direction, I'm going.
Okay, alright.
Okay, Anthony, Appropriation Transfers.
As we wrap up the 11-12 fiscal year, you have a list of transfers in front of you. Most are pretty low dollar volume, the larger ones reflect the work that was done at the order of property throughout the year. There was some significant, I think the well had to be replaced, was some significant electrical work, and that's what drove that. Aside from that, she basically has some small transfers. There'll be some more in the next meeting as we look to wrap up the year. There's still some bills coming in through June 28th, so, not the final numbers as of yet.
When do you expect to have the final announcement taken?
Taylor Festival? It's built until Sunday, so it won't be until two weeks from this Friday that the last pay is come out, so I would say early part of September, hopefully.
May I give you your preliminary report?
Right, it's funny. Who, who do we pay from public works?
Public works, police, fires pulled out through, Vintec does the EMS, yes. There's some senior center van drivers that were there that paid as well. Their bills don't come typically right in right away, there's still some bills...
Anybody local with a township, grab?
Honestly, don't take...
Four local people, one...
Four local people?
Yeah, and one was the father of a football player, he lives in, lives in New Haven, or uncle of a football player that lives in New Haven. So four were residents.
That was good.
I'd like to make a motion that the town, the North Bramford Town Council approves the following appropriation transfers as recommended by the town manager and treasurer and finance director.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Fuji, roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Duddy?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
Yes.
Item H, Approval Tax Refunds.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Moved by Councilor Duddy, seconded by Councilor Angeloni, roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Duddy?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
Yes.
Quick question, Mr. Mayor, does the finance committee still want to meet tomorrow night? Because usually those are the things you kind of go over, so. We have it posted, and I know usually what you also discuss are the, the projects for the schools and the grants, but I don't have that meeting until the 23rd with everybody, including the state, so I'm not going to have much time.
So there's really, we already did appropriations and everything else, so.
Right, I would say skip it.
I agree.
I'd like to amend the agenda.
So do we, do we need to make a motion to cancel the meeting?
Yeah, but then I'll post.
Okay, so, I'd like to amend the agenda then for two items. I was going to have 13I for a brief discussion about the press box at the athletic complex at the high school, and so then the next one would be cancel the finance, finance meeting.
J would be finance. Second.
Alright, I have a motion for item I, the press box athletic field facility, moved by Deputy Mayor Rose, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. And then I have J for the finances subcommittee, cancellation of the meeting. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Duddy?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
Yes.
One of the things, Stan and T. Williams, the bid opening is scheduled for August 17th at 2:00 PM. There will be an addendum that will come through from Soundland tomorrow, and that will get posted along on the website. When we had the walkthrough, there was probably about 225 contractors that shut up.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
So are we on the press box? I for the press box. I got a call from Paul Calamita, who's involved with Touchdown Club, and we've all known for at least 20 years that there's issues with the press box at the high school. I'm not quite sure what they, what they want to do. I almost think they're looking for like a, a nod from us that if they can raise the money and they, and have an engineer look at it and get the plans, and they can rebuild this thing, that, that we're good with it. But I'm not sure that's exactly what they're looking for. And, okay, you guys are...
Okay.
Mike, Karen, one of the football coaches, unfortunately everyone else is not here.
Yeah.
What happened, last Thursday, there was a touchdown club meeting, and the week before that, a couple of people went to look at the press box, and it's, it's fallen apart. It's, it's, I guess the roof, the tractor that's on top was, I don't know how, but they think it got blown off in heavy wind, and it, it was shot. I know, I used to stand up there, now you don't find me up there anymore, and, you know, I'm coming through. So, I just threw out the Touchdown Club, just, did anybody know anybody from Loews or Home Depot that may be able to donate stuff, you know, to do this? Because I've been hearing about it, I've been coaching for 11 years, and this time of year, it's always a conversation. And one of the people from the press, from the Touchdown Club said, "I have a good friend that is a, the store manager of the Home Depot in Stratford." So I said, "Well, can you just throw it at her?" In my personal business, I, I, I refer people to Home Depot with donations. I set up light support systems in the home for children, and people who like to have generators, and I always send them, and they've always provided, no charge, when you're done, just bring it back, which they can't do now, so I just kind of threw it out there. And the response came back was, "Give us a bill of material list, and let's see what we have." And it kind of snowballed through Potato Festival that came back to me, said, "Call Mike, we'll deliver it." So I just wanted to make sure that that's not the message that you guys were getting. It's still...
Well, variations of that.
Yeah, so I heard a lot of, I had all these messages. So, basically, they wanted to do stuff, and they, it went from everywhere where they may have some materials, like bundles that are broken that they could give us, to a heavy discount, to a lot of different things, but they, they definitely want to see it and to let us know what they can do. Another member of the Touchdown Club, you know, Perry's dad, I guess has relatives, owns, he's a table owner, or whatever it's called, and he's a contractor also. So we are looking to see, like, again, if, with your blessings, if it's something we can proceed to do, knowing that, you know, it's not going to get done next week on our part, but it's definitely something that's necessary, and I guess we got thrown out a step where our first game to be televised somewhere, and it's kind of embarrassing because there's no place we have to be from. Yeah, and I guess, there's a, there is a plan, so, you know, everybody involved, they're down in North Beach, so I know I got some taxes today to kind of change it around, so...
Still support.
I don't know who drew that up, I know initially, we kind of, some of the coaches from the school got together and drew some stuff up, and the goal with the plan that we have now is to, right now, it's only good for the football field. They want to open up both sides so people can film the soccer and field hockey, so everybody has access to the park.
I, I think part of the issue was, because this was looked at a number of years ago, when they redid the bleachers, and we made those ADA accessible, is, there's an issue with the press box and whether you keep the existing footprint, or you go larger, or what you want to do, because then you may have to meet ADA requirements, which would involve an elevator, and that's...
And I think the plan was to keep it the same.
The plan looks here like it's the same size.
Yeah.
You can get around that, because you're going to be remodeling the one.
Right. I think the plan was to...
So we want to make sure that...
Maybe a bigger on the second floor, to add a second layer to it.
Right, that's why we have to be careful as to how it's labeled.
So this was done by Doug Fisher, you know, he's a very well-respected TA. He actually was going to do it when I was going to donate the press box for free.
Well, I know, Joe Stone was going to give a lot of money to him, he got a touchdown.
And, you know, so Doug's still on board, I actually told Paul that, you know, I would help out, and so, I mean, I don't know if we give him a nod that, yeah, go ahead, raise some money, get, get the stuff going, and, but I mean, you know, when we looked at, when I looked at it with Doug Fisher, unlike some of the things we've done since then, in like 1964 or 65, when those bleachers went up, those things were built, and there's no problem with the press box on them. So the bleachers are, you know, the, the substructure of those bleachers are...
That's true.
Yeah, they're great, so, so there isn't a large cost, providing we remodel what we have there, rather than, than...
Right, that's what you have to be careful of.
Do it. When I, when I was going to donate the thing for free, it got turned down by the Board of Ed because they thought they were going to move the bleachers when they did the track, so they didn't want a new press box, but...
Yeah, Paul Swanson, today's a clear of a big urban legend, that everybody's turning it down, and it...
No, they just, I mean, they had a good, they thought they might, if they, you know, if they had moved the bleachers, they would have had the right land number of lanes on the track, and they could have held the track meet there, but the cost of moving, the cost of moving the...
They still hold the track meets.
Right, they can have a state meet, but...
Right.
The cost of moving the bleachers wasn't going to happen.
Right, right.
So...
But right now, it's almost not motion, it's a box, at some point, it's a safety issue, it's in itself.
Well, my son graduated in 2002, and I went there, took the top off, put new plywood on the roof, and put the rail, put a coating on it, put the rail back on, and I told the AD, "I'll give you one year, I will guarantee you that it's the same."
Only it is, and I remember because that was our first year, and it was three-four inch plywood, and personally, thank you for that.
So anyway, I'm all for it. I don't know what we have to do to, do we need any action, or?
I mean, you may just want to just say that, you know, that you make a motion that you encourage them to continue with the press box renovation.
I'll make a motion to...
Well, they need to come back to us with how they're going to finance, I mean, how...
I think more importantly, to go a step further, is get the material list together so that we know what the cost is, so we start, you know, raising the money and seeking...
Now, is that the original plan?
It looks...
Because, I mean, right now, soccer, I mean, you just button this on the top, so you're going to need, right?
This says June 12th, June of '02.
Yeah.
I mean, of 12, I'm sorry.
Why don't we make the motion to continue moving forward so that we could, you know, with the consensus of the council?
And then make sure they know they got to come back.
Right.
Moved by Don.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Fuji, seconded by Councilor Angeloni.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Duddy?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
Yes.
Item J, Finance Meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to cancel the finance meeting for...
August 8.
August 8.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Fuji, seconded by Councilor Wentworth, roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Duddy?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
Yes.
Item 14, Citizen Statements and Petitions.
The founder told 51 Middleton Avenue. I know you guys, we had talked just after with John, with Andy from John's Refuse, and that's back when you were pretty close on the Stanford company and him, and that's when it first came, became apparent, there is nothing that, such a big contract even like that, where he gets a citizen of the town adjustment, and you hit on it again tonight, but that big a contract, I mean, you really got to move forward and get something in there, because that contract could have gone to the Stanford company. John's employs people from this town. If he didn't get that contract, I mean, there's two brothers that live right up on Middleton Avenue to work for him, who knows, they'd be on unemployment now. So you really got to get hot on this, and make sure that there's like that 10% adder, I don't know what you're...
It's a local bidder preference.
You know, and I don't know how long it takes before you get into it.
That's a lot of money.
I mean, like, the, the, yeah, it's a lot of money, that trash contract.
It is a lot of money to pay an extra 10% on, say, a million dollar contract.
But it comes back to you in taxes.
Right, but that's $100,000.
But it comes, well, do you want the money to go to Stanford?
Not, not at all. Why do you want the big process?
We want the right number, though, because here's what starts to happen with that.
Or make it 5% then, just...
No, I, I agree 100% cliff, but if we start doing that, what will happen is, we won't be able to get other bidders to come in, and our bids will start escalating.
But if it's a procedure in other towns, I mean...
5%, you know?
Alright, knock it, it's, it's, it's a show of faith that you care about your local companies.
I agree.
Right now, you treat them like a Stanford company, you could treat them like a Massachusetts company. There's nothing here that says, "Hey, we kind of like you, stick around." I mean, put something in writing, put something in...
Well, that's, that's why the town manager's going to get back to us at the September meeting.
But, but...
You talked about it a little bit with Andy that night, I mean, just don't let the ball drop on this, because I think, you know, if there's another big contract, it was pretty close with Andy, I, I'm...
The thing you got to remember, though, is if we, if we do this, we won't be able to get other people to bid on, on this.
No, I don't think so.
You know, it's, it, well, I mean, you're going to, you know...
Bonnie's in the business, he knows.
Yeah, I understand, but you have to at least show your local people you've scaled.
I agree, we have to find a way of showing preference to local guys, I agree.
They have to match local bids to get the job, that's what it comes down to.
But that's going to require a little more thought, and, you know what I mean?
We have to be very careful with the bidding process.
Alright, but look, look, we'll just...
Without a doubt, we want to vote.
Stick with the story, then, what if they hadn't got the bid, he had the self-trucks that are registered in our town that you would lose tax money on, the guys that have